Do we know if Nat is coming? Does he know about this?
He does. Let me text him.
All right, well, we'll get going and see if he shows up. Welcome everyone to the special meeting, planning board meeting for Tuesday, the 21st of January. I would take the motion to accept the agenda.
Oh, moved.
Backing.
Motion made by John, seconded by Barry. John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Oh, my gallery view went away.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just screen sharing.
Uh, okay. John, Barry, Joe?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So today's meeting is to discuss the warrant article as it relates to pickleball courts. There won't be any public comment today. No question and answer with the public. This is just strictly a board discussion on the direction we want to take with this. So with that said, Meg, you wanna give a little introduction or?
Sure. So the select board is adopting the warrant tomorrow evening at their meeting. So that's why the importance of having this discussion in advance of that. So currently what's drafted for your consideration is inserting the term pickleball into the use chart with the letter N under, so not allowed in any zoning districts. The intent of being so prohibitive is because that allows through the public hearing process and town meeting to to put other guardrails in place. So you can't you can't propose something that's more strict. You can only make it less strict over time through through the course of the hearing. So I think that the initial intent is not an all out ban. The intent is to cap the wide net, see where the conversation goes. And you know, if you want to take a look at what district should allow it by right perhaps, or should allow it by special permit. Things that would not be in the scope of this article for this town meeting is a definition. I think maybe depending on how a conversation goes with setbacks that may or may not be within the scope, it would depend. But it's really focused on on the use chart. So I guess another alternative path would be to come up with a more robust proposal for a future special town meeting. So that's that's what you all need to discuss and decide today.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Yes, can we even put it in the use chart without it being defined?
Yeah.
We can. Okay. Members of the board. John?
Um, well, I would definitely be in favor of deferring this till, you know, hopefully there'll be a special meeting anyway in September or so. And the reason for that is, you know, I mean, this comes down to the noise factor, you know, that's what it is. And that's in my view, anyway, it's difficult to set, just say bigger lot less impacted by noise. I don't think it's that with the lot sizes, you know, whether it's lug one versus something else, like, you know, town versus something else. Because if you've, you know, anybody who's ever lived near one, this noise carries an awfully long way. And on, you know, if you're in a, on a, on a, say a lug one lot, the fact that it's next door on the next lug one lot is not going to make a huge difference in terms of the negative impact it's gonna have on its neighbors. So I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, what what the way forward really is. I am in favor of of regulating it. But it's, I don't think it's just as simple as, you know, this kind of zoning district can and this one can't. So I would be in favor of doing some more work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I would, I agree. For me, I think the solution is in setbacks and and I don't think that that's within our scope of this warrant. Barry, you look like you got something on your mind.
I'll, I'll.
Well, he just froze.
Foes. Joe?
Okay, I agree with John. You know, when I first was kind of thinking about this, I was wondering about R20. And I'm thinking maybe it's an R40 minimum, but I I agree that, you know, we've, we've heard about decimal levels when the great Albert Yacht Club came forward. You know, they were basically saying it's not that much, but I agree with John. I think it does carry. And I think that hearing something constant and that popping noise for, you know, even for an hour, I think it would be very inhibitive. And I think that there's probably professional disorder studies therapists that all would agree that there's, there's a profound effect. The other part is you could be in a neighborhood, it could be very quiet. And then all of a sudden, this, this pickleball court comes in and and I don't think it's so much the surface as it is the game and and the being played. I have a client that has a swimming pool next door and he doesn't have a problem. But of course, they push the pool as far away from the house. And so, you know, when he's being rented or the grandkids are down, all he hears all day long is Marco Polo. So, you know, really got to be careful where we're going. And I do think, Dave, kind of need to look at the zoning and where it is. What's the minimum distance? You know, is there a 50, 75 foot buffer? Do we take on something like the Concom guidelines? Is that something we want to look at? But I, I think there's containment systems that I've seen that are glass. And maybe that's something we, you know, if it's brought in on a special permit and it's designed more like a platform tennis, which is contained. And I think it's that containment should be around each court. So if there's multiple courts, you know, side by side, I think that each has a glass partition because I think the further that got away, that noise could carry and something we even look at elevation of something. You know, I was on a, on my project today at Jefferson Ave. And I'm looking up over the bluff and I see all the houses above. So I think that sound didn't carry. So maybe that's something that has to have a roof system and and rat. I mean, so there's a lot of different things and that would then fall into ground cover problems. But I, you know, I just feel the noise and the pop, pop, pop. And as we, you know, I had, when I was acting chair for that, you know, a gentleman in the, in the audience playing that noise. And it wasn't bad. I thought a kid was playing it. So I didn't really find it offensive. But at the same time, I think if it was going throughout the entire meeting, I would have been, you know, quite upset. So I just think there's some, but I don't think it should be an all right ban, but I do think there's some number one zoning. The construction details are very important. I think the HCC needs review when they're reviewing the court, some containment system and sound ending mitigation. I think that would be super important. But but Dave, going back to the Concom, I think it'd be really smart to bring that along. And that would be kind of the way I would go with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Barry, you want to try again yet?
Yeah, I do. No, I needed to, I, there was a quick thought that I had and I wanted to research it. Megan, things, I threw you to Megan. Things like tennis courts and stuff fall under special permit in the zoning chart? I just don't remember off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I haven't had time to research it.
No, they, they don't. They're allowed in all districts.
Okay, but if a tennis court is, I'm just trying to think. So technically by right, this tennis court or pickleball court, whatever, could be built anywhere, right?
Right now?
Yeah, right now. I mean, I could build, I could build a tennis court on my property if I wanted to, right?
And it would comply with the, it does not count towards ground cover, but you do have to abide by the setbacks of the underlying zoning district.
Right. But above and beyond that, there's nothing that that triggers it to come before the planning board or any other boards, correct?
Unless it's part of a larger recreational facility type of permit. But just to put one as a personal property owner in your backyard, no.
The HCC would have to review this.
Yeah.
The HCC would, ACC is jurisdiction number. And that's been a contentious subject, Barry, just so you know.
The scope of the HCC's review, they're an architectural review board. So you know, they can talk about the visible impacts from a public way. They not get into the neighbor versus neighbor or noise or any issues like that.
Okay, all right. So the, the noise mitigation, the, the noise factor really boils down to having to go through current noise bylaws that we have in place. All right. So I, I have to kind of agree with my colleagues. And, and again, you know, this is, this is a little disturbing. Here we are back in Nantucket and I'm gonna say it, I feel like I'm back in the land of no again. Know this, know that. No, 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 no. I mean, last, the, the last, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'll track back on for a sec. Okay, I know I'm deviating a little bit. But what was, what was the main incidental? Was it the noise that triggered this to come into? I just want to understand that the genesis of it, the noise is what's triggering coming back into place, right?
Yeah, I think that, that it's very disruptive in a neighborhood, especially in a smaller zoning district.
Right.
And it's, I think the nature of the sound is, is the problem. And I've read some stuff. They, they say that the frequency is, is similar to the backup alarm on a truck.
Yeah.
So that's, I, I think it's like, it grades on people.
No, I understand that. I understand. I, I, I get that. And you know, there's, there's a number of factors. When you start dealing with sound, if that is the only issue, when you start dealing with sound, there's a number of factors that either can amplify or diminish that sound quality as well as the fact that there are a number of mitigation strategies that you can put into place under which to do it. Okay, so I I honestly think that the answer here is not to tackle this right now. I think, I think it's better to put this off for a little bit. Maybe we need to look a little bit more closer at things that, you know, that, that are closer to, you know, like tennis court or something like that. And maybe they can become a special permit thing where they are reviewed by us. And then, because every place is gonna be different. And that's what I like about special permit is you get to apply what you know about it and what, what the, what the circumstances are around where it's being built. Do you have to say, okay, yes, no, maybe? That might be the answer. And then each thing now gets handled on a case by case basis. Okay? Um, because I, I, I think just like with the recent application we've had, there's a number which was interesting. There was a pickleball court that's already in existence close to it because, but because of the fact that there are trees around, there's a tad bit of distance behind it, but especially the trees, they don't hear it as much. Okay? And the others, the newest ones that were being proposed, a little bit closer, but not as much sound buffering is going on. And that really is the answer here is where's it going? How, how close or far away it is from other things? And then a mitigation strategy under which to deal with it. Doesn't mean you can't be able to do it, but you got to figure out, you know, what it is that, that will deaden the sound. That's all. To, to end dead in the sound to a tolerable level. That's the other thing, too. Let's, let's be realistic here at this point. Because, I mean, you're not gonna get zero. And you shouldn't require a zero. Because, I mean, there's plenty of ambient noise that's out there. I think it's worthy of a little bit more discussion before it hits the mainstream of going to a town meeting. Absolutely. But that, that, you know, if, if, because I'd really like to find out how big a problem this thing is. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Yeah, I one second, John. I agree with you, Barry. I think that it's gonna be a combination of special permit and setbacks is probably gonna be the most responsible way to attack this. And since setbacks aren't in the purview of this article, then I think it might be most wise for us just to take no action and, and come back special town meeting with them, with a, with a thought out package. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on one of the points Barry made. And he used the term ambient noise. If you remember when we were looking at the great Harvey Yacht Club application, at one point, one gentleman stood up and said, you know, one of their kind of expert witnesses types stood up and said, well, you know, the noise isn't really that different to an aircraft coming in to land. That may be true, except the aircraft doesn't come in on Nantucket, you know, 20 times every minute, you know. So it gets to be real difficult when you start talking about the levels, because it's the levels and it's the frequency in this pop, pop, pop going on. So I just, I was just reminded that when Barry said that. So that, that's, that's all. Mr. Chair, I.
Thank you, John. Howard, any thoughts?
Yes, I, I appreciate what Barry was saying, that every circumstance is different. But I believe that if you start making exceptions and dealing with people with installations separately on a one-off basis, you're going to expose the, the, the planning board to that arbitrary and capricious issue right, right head on. So I think you need a more global approach to this that's defensible.
Good point, Howard. Thank you. Barry, let me give Nat a shot here and then I'll come back to you, Nat.
Really sorry.
All right.
Thought it was four o'clock. Good thing it's a small island. So I'm sorry to be late, but can I just re, kind of refresh if, if something's been said? How we set up the VR zoning with pools is sort of like, it doesn't mean they're illegal. But they can create, you know, different location setbacks, et cetera. But the experience that we've had with pools in the last, let's just say 10 years, I mean, it's really less in the sense of regulation beyond what we had up to then. You know, we've, we've banned them in, in the ROH by one vote, by the way. We have defined the size of pools. We have an actual size in the zoning bylaw, which is great. Should have done that years ago. We just didn't know this was coming. So I look at this pickleball thing and I'm saying, okay. I think of noise by law, I think of home occupancy stuff. We have farming allowed in all districts by right. You can have roosters on Union Street. I don't think that's gonna happen, but it could and no one could stop it. And they get up early. Okay? All right. They don't need lighting to be, you know, they just get up. So I just don't think, I think we need to really be sure what we're doing. I think looking at the small districts is a good idea. As far as, you know, the, the downtown, obviously, and then you have your R1, R5, and maybe R10. I, I just, I don't think we should be flipping it to ZVA right out of the gate like we did with VR with pools. Like we dealt with the MMD. But this is sort of something we've never talked about this before. Other than the applications regarding the nobody if I'm road stuff. I'm not talking about, I'm, I'm talking about red private residences. I think we should get way in with the HDC. I think they should, you know, if they're dealing with this and we don't know about it or staff does, we need to have that conversation, too. So that's where I am at the moment, listening to everybody else, though. I'm sorry, I'm late.
All right. Thanks, Nat. My concern with the special permits, when, when we talk, start talking about, you know, the MMD is, you know, are, are we gonna get a position like we have with Attorney Cullen? And, and I think Barry agrees with him. I don't necessarily agree with him that, hey, if it's a special permit, then you have a right to do it. You need to help us figure a way to do it. And, and I think that that's concerning, especially in our five, our 10. Barry, I'll get you. And maybe I misrepresented that, but I'm sorry. So I, I don't want to put ourselves in a position with that, with the special permit, saying, hey, have attorneys come to us and say, no, we have a right to do this. The special permit is you finding a way to give us this permit, right? So that's my concern is that that we'll have to fight off that argument in the special permit. And that's why I like, I feel like having a minimum setback in some ways kind of resolves those issues. But, but sorry, go ahead, Barry.
Go to Joe. He's had his hand up for a few moments before me and then, yeah, I'll chime back in.
Okay, Barry, yeah, I'm sorry. I just didn't know.
No, 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 no.
So I, I understand the right that the people have towards the game, but I do think that the walls is the mitigation if you're gonna do it. I definitely think from R20 up to lug three is probably the only places that really could go. Maybe a special R20 zone or lot, but I, I truly can't see that happening. And, and, and this is the other part of it is like, well, can we back it off at a later date saying, hey, this mitigation, this design detail that we've done works. But the other thing I want to say about tabling this, and this is what happened to the pools and going before the HCC. The moment people know that this is coming, people are coming to the HCC and running to get the pickleball court. So I, I kind of feel like we might want to do a late night charrette kind of thing and see if we can work something out based on this conversation. But I really.
Thank you.
But I really feel like that's gonna be one of the problems where this is going to be running straight at it and get as many as possible. So I feel like we should put something in place. And maybe it's not perfect, but I definitely think that that's something we should consider. And then the other part is, Dave, I'm with you. I think it's, it's a setback. I think it's a zoning. And I think that could be established, maybe crafted and have another meeting or put it on the back end of their 30th meeting. That's even possible, but I, I really think that there's a, there's a the, the wave of pickleballs is coming, that the noise is enough people coming into the plus department, having complaints about them. The HCC is hearing problems. I mean, the chair one night in the middle of a meeting got up and left because they were discussing the noise and it's about the aesthetics, but they were coming up and twisting some of the language to make their argument. So I, I really think that the HCC needs help because they don't control noise. And I think there's a way, but to Nat's point, yes, there are chickens on Gardner Street and roosters and stuff like that. Oh, man, there's nothing you could do. The only thing we could do is it was in the, the, Nat, the henhouse was in the setback of a well and so we're able to move them, but I had to go up on a porch. But anyways, there, the, this is a problem. So I think we should address it. I, I don't think we should shy away from this. I, we're gonna grab the pole by the horns and kind of ride this one. So.
Meg, what would be the consequence if we move forward and put it as a, and we tried to get it passed as a special permit in all zoning districts? With the thought that we would come back and readdress this at the following town meeting with setbacks and other regulations? Would that be a problem?
You could do that and you could alter this article through your motion in the, throughout the public hearing process. So if you all elect to, you know, move forward with keeping this on the warrant as drafted, the public hearing is scheduled for Thursday, the 23rd, and through the motion, you can make, make it less strict to be in the scope. So a special permit is less strict. And you, that would absolutely be within the scope of your authority to, to do that.
Okay. I'm gonna, I see you, Howard. I'm gonna go to John and then come back to you and then go to Barry. John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hear me out, guys. And I realize this is my first year at this, but there is something I need to say, which I know before I say it, that we are going to be very unlikely to be able to do much about it. But think about pools for a minute. And think about, you know, the, the areas where they're at. It's not unusual for at least every other house these days to have a pool, perhaps even every house. You, so if you take, you know, a zoning district, if if there's a pickleball in every other, no matter how, what, what kind of zoning district we're talking about, if there's a pickleball court in every other home, it is gonna be so so, so awful. And I know we're not in the business of picking who gets one and who doesn't. But you know, if we, my, my fear is if we do this with setbacks and stuff, we're still gonna end up with a lot of pickleball courts in certain districts. And I don't know how we deal with that, but boy, it, it has the whole, if we had as many pickleballs courts show up over the next five years as pools, then, and they're easier to construct, less it would be a, you know, I think we should think about what that might look like. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's why I think that the setbacks are key. It would, it would preclude a lot of lots from. Barry, did you have something? I know I haven't seen if Abby has any input on this.
Go to her, please.
Okay.
Thanks. I can, I can wait, you know that.
Abby, any feelings either way? We can't hear you. All right. Might be, might be attending to the baby. Go ahead, Barry.
Thanks. You can give her a sec. Abby, if, if chime in if you need to. Um, there's a few things that I want to kind of run back through at this point. The, the first thing I'm gonna say is that with other things like the roosters being out there, well, if it proves to be a big problem, there's dinner for tomorrow night. Good. I got you smiling. That's great. If it's a pool, you can ask your neighbors, you know, or file a complaint with the police department. A few things I want to just run back through real quickly, and I'm still kind of a fan of the special permit, but we'll, we'll cover that. So arbitrary and capricious behavior under a special permit takes a lot. It's always a function of well crafting the special permit to make sure that happens. So that doesn't bother me as much. There's always someone who's gonna come and say, that was an arbitrary and capricious, whatever. As long as you are thoughtful and craft it well, there's an opportunity to make it a successful venture. The second thing I like about special permit, we can always reopen the hearing. So if it's not working well or the factors are not there, we can reopen it. And in reopening it, doesn't mean that we can't all of a sudden say, you tried your best, it doesn't work, thank you very much. End the conversation. The fact that people can say, okay, well, like attorney, you know, like an attorney coming and saying, oh, that's not our problem. It's up to this board to have to deal with it. No, absolutely not. As long as you've given it a thoughtful process, it's not necessarily up for us to deal with it. They have got to be part of the solution as well. And if they cannot come up with reasonable solutions under it, you've now formulated what's gonna happen with that special permit, which can be a denial given upon where it is. So I, I honestly think it's worth throttling back. And Joe came up with a very reasonable thing to talk about, which was, yes, the moment there's a whiff of this thing, you could see a glut of permits happening. And boy, have we seen that before. So maybe the way to deal with this that I will throw out to you is to put a temporary moratorium on things. Six months. Just bear with me.
No, yeah, the reason I laugh is because we've already had an issue with something we're trying to do that with. So I'm not sure if it's viable.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, there's, there's always.
Meg, do you think it would be viable in this situation?
So without veering off the agenda into that other topic, but based on town council's analysis on the thought behind that, I, I don't think that's a viable solution at this point.
All right. Okay. I mean, there, there's, there's an argument you could make. All right, okay. I mean, there there's there's an argument you could make either way.
So can you take over?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
So anyways, th- those are just some thoughts I want you to think about. It's supposed to trying to rush into this thing or prevent the the glut of things happening. There is an alternate strategy for dealing with this in the short term and then the long term with it. So, um, I don't know what to tell you and and I won't bank my dollars on there being another special town meeting in 2025. So you have to think 2026, at least a year before this happens.
Yeah.
You know, we we don't know. We don't know. So that that's the only, you know, again, look at the long-term strategy behind dealing with this. And that's all I'm saying to you is that, um, this may take a while and God knows what's gonna happen in between that whole thing, but I I I'm still kind of a fan of, let's look at it from a perspective of where does it fit well, where does it not fit well? Setbacks aren't necessarily an answer here because
Noise.
Yeah, it's, this is all noise and there are a number of different strategies for dealing with noise. Uh, you know, besides putting a setback in and a setback may actually work against you for certain things. So I think we're rushing into this too quickly. We're trying to solve the problem with a clock ticking over our head right now. And I, that's never a good way to tackle things. So give it some thought about where you'd like to take it as one board member. I mean, I'm hearing what all of you are saying, but I I I would either like you to say, okay, we can wait a bit, or we should just maybe temporarily stop the forward movement for a little bit. Be analytical and thoughtful in the process and come up with something that's gonna work.
So Barry, are you suggesting, I just want to get get this.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Drop a straw poll here quick. Are you suggesting that we do nothing and come back at special town meeting? Are you suggesting we put something in to mitigate further problems until we get it right?
Okay, so we're never gonna get it right.
Well.
We're never, we were, trust me, for I've been doing this for long enough to know.
All right, he'll be, he'll be back in a second. Um, so I guess that that's the straw poll I want to take here. From members, I want to understand if if members would like to keep this on the warrant and and move forward with working something out with what we have or letting it go to special town meeting and come back with something that we can add setbacks to and everything else. Does that sound reasonable, Meg? Yes.
Yes.
So let's, let's let Barry get back on and we'll do that. Go, Joe, go ahead.
I I kind of feel like we should press forward and see if we can get it on and get it. You know, like we just said, it's not gonna be perfect. Nothing's perfect, but I think that we should have something ready to go. And at the last minute, if we decide to pull it, then we decide we'll kick it down to the next town meeting. But there is gonna be another special time meeting. So I think as far as we, if we can get as far as we can, I think we have, you know, I'm sorry, Megan, to put this on you, but I think if we have time to get this crafted, make some edits. You know, I I agree with a little bit of the setback, but that Barry was saying, but the one thing that I'm noticing in HCC applications is, you know, there'll be this long rectangle lot. And what do they do? They put the pickleball as far away from their house and it's a budding the neighbors. And and that's where I think that you will have the going back to that advantage of the setback, maybe it's a certain distance from your house. I I mean, this is something we gotta kind of work on, but I think it comes down to special permit, some distance and zoning of the 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 uh, the lot lines and having a special setback. And and if they, we feel that it's too tight of a neighborhood where it could be echoing off all the houses around the neighborhood and echoing further and further away. Then I think that we say, you've got to build walls. You've got to put up, you know, the one deep detail. I saw was glass walls and they were 15 feet tall. I I think there's a way to to allow this to go forward because I think by right, it's gonna happen in some way, shape or form. So this is where I'm saying it comes down to really truly the details. Um, and and I think it's a neighborly thing to do. So that's kind of my thing. And and watching the the pools, the moment we put in that moratorium. I mean, I permitted one and within a a week before the deadline hit, you know, we had a shovel in the ground. So, but it was very stressful trying to get that in and and this was for medical reasons. So, you know, I can't even, this has nothing to do with medical reasons, but watching the amount of permits and talking to the rest of the architectural community, you know, and agents at the HCC. They're all like, oh, I got 10 coming. I got six coming, you know. People like, oh, I wasn't gonna do a pool for another five years. Well, F that, I'm here I am, I'm going in, I want this, I need this, you know, they just really had a hard time like waiting to see how this fell out and uh, and I think it caused a problem like the building cap and all. Anyway, we go on and on, but I think, I think we need to get ahead of this because I think it snuck out the door. And we got to pull it back in and get it in front of us and be able to get it as as Bernie Barley would say, sick and tired of seeing break legs. I'm gonna see headlights. And I think that's where we need to be as a board. So.
Nice. So I'm gonna go to, I think I'm gonna take a straw poll and see what what everyone feels. But first I'm gonna go to Megan, then Nat. And then, and then Barry, and then we'll take a little straw poll and see if how people feel about either tabling this for this town meeting or getting something in for this town meeting. Meg?
Just wanted to be very clear about the scope of this article, should you, how it may evolve, should you elect to to keep this on the warrant and and proceed with the the process for this town meeting. So what is before you, what's in the draft warrant is a use chart, inserting this into the use chart with a prohibition in all zoning districts. So you could throughout the public hearing process and your motion, change some of those no's to yeses. You could change some of those no's to special permit. Within the special permit category, if throughout the process you were to hypothetically do that, um, you know, putting things, parameters in place as a part of the special permit review, like setbacks would be appropriate. I want to be careful about saying that it would be within the scope to add a broad setback um, as a part of this article, because that may be considered outside of the the scope. So, you know, that's something, that level of detail, if it's gonna be applied broadly, would likely have to come back to a future town meeting. The scope of this is simply the use chart.
Yeah, no, that that makes sense.
And it's too, yes, relate that and new concepts because we're too far into the process just because of advertising requirements and things like that.
No, I think that also simplifies the task in front of us as well. So, uh, there, uh, Nat.
Yeah, I just want to through you, Joe, I, you know more about what's going on on the permitting side than than I certainly would. I mean, are there that many applications at HDC for these things?
Uh, there was a uh, hard push for them. Um, I would say they're probably now pretty consistent. Uh, but as I stated, it was a contentious argument where they went back and forth and reviewed the purview of the HCC and the chairman at that evening. Um, former chair, uh, got up and left the meeting because it it people didn't want to abide by what their purview was. Um, and and one of the the people that was opposing it is a very good tennis player and and other people, you know, and living in tight zoning, uh, were having problems with this. So, um, that's why I'm saying I I I think it, there's been enough uh, noise, if you will, sorry for the pun, um, at the plus department for this to get crafted and be put in place. I don't, I don't agree with the outright prohibition or ban. I don't think that's correct, but I I it's enough that it's coming forward that it, and and the noise is only gonna get louder from more and more people coming in, as more and more applications are approved. And right now it's a wild, wild west and and, um, well, like I said, the the one I saw in Matic, they pushed it to far away from their house and closer to the neighbor's house. It's like pool equipment. It's like, you know, anything that they don't want to hear and deal with, they push it off and you know, you're seeing more and more of that.
Okay, so I'm gonna play town council for a second. General bylaw, like for example, we have that agreement in town when we have a special permit for working like till, I don't know what time, we had a, the you know, there was a limit. I can't remember what we used to put on projects, but it was like four or five o'clock, whatever it was. In the summertime, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about time, like noise bylaws 10, having something that's a general bylaw for outdoor. I mean, this is where I I a special permit doesn't make it less noisy. Setbacks don't make it less noisy. Then you're gonna, Joe, then you're gonna have this thing with these big glass walls. I mean, is that is that what people want to see? I mean, I don't, I I I'm just trying to think of the next fad that comes in. Plastic hockey uh, rinks that you can use year round, you know, I I I I just don't know what to say about this. I do agree with what you're saying as far as getting ahead of it a little bit, which is what we're trying to do. Without looking like idiots, though. That's the problem. Like, what's the next thing? The fun police, the fun police thing. I mean, we have outdoor Bluetooth speakers everywhere. Like I see what people are doing in their yards, Joe. You're permitting the stuff. I'm in their yards and see it. It's like amazing what people have now and what's available for fun outside and not.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so that, I mean, one of the things is like there's there is mats, there's like, you know, you've seen the tennis, but there's there's masses tarps, but, um, the other part is, you know, Matt, I have friends, so I go see them. I see their Bluetooths, but, um, um, but no, I I get it. And that's part of the problem with STRs is is it's the outside living and music and late night and and, you know, they're they're happy to come to Dan Tucker. I get it. Um, I just seeing what Great Hobby Yacht Club is gonna do with pickleball courts, seeing what Land Bank's gonna do through my CPC position. You know, there's a lot of public demand for this. So I don't know if the residential ones are that important. I don't know if they're gonna play, but you know, if I when I, early days in roller hockey, when I was setting up and trying to get the rink built, if I built a rink in the back, I would have 40 guys in my driveway. You know, on a Sunday morning at seven o'clock playing till noon time and then, you know, after work coming to buy and play. And and I can tell you right now, it'd be you know, a lot of noise of the guys playing. And then of course, like a lot of noises and, you know, yelling and barking and fun. And then, of course, there's, you know, the light hydration that we would have to do after. So there's like a lot of noises. So I just think you've got to really be be, you know, this could turn into a private function. If people want to come over to their neighbor, they're like, hey, let's go over to Dave's. They've got a big lot, we'll pay, we'll play there, hang out. Um, we'll listen to the band next door and.
I mean, I see a lot of rotted gorilla basketball hoops. Remember those things that with the hydraulic handle and it turns up and down? I see them in people's yards that look like they've been there for 20 years now. No one's using them anymore or very infrequently. If people were calling up all their buddies to come over and play basketball, they'd be making a lot of noise while they were playing. I I I just I again, I just don't know where we're headed, but it is a very it has a lot of humor in this as well as reality. As far as pools don't all make noise unless there's a lot of people. You know, we remember the peels of laughter, Joe. I don't know if you were on then, but that I'll that we'll never forget that term. We need to look up the word peel, you know, because I never heard it before. But anyway. Yeah, you know, but pools are some quiet when there's nobody there. Pickleball courts quiet when there's nobody there. I I just don't know where this goes. I get nervous about going too far and peeling it back, no pun intended, but you know, I'm not saying we don't need to do anything though. And I'm not saying we shouldn't go forward with something. I just don't want us to, how would we change the language when they're adopting the article this week? I mean, adopting the warrant this week, Megan? Like, how would we?
Through amendments.
So through your motion,
Yeah.
you could take a look at the zoning districts and you could allow it in some, you could allow it by special permit in some, and you could prohibit it in others that that would be within the scope. So the direction that we need to take today is, do you want to keep it on the warrant? Knowing that, you know, you can have this larger conversation through the public hearing process and can amend it district by district through your motion after the public hearing has closed. Or do you want to say, select board, um, you know, we'd like to withdraw this article for consideration so that we can come back with something more robust in the future. So those really are the two options.
All right, great. Um, let's, let's, I'm gonna go to Barry and Abby and and then we're gonna take a quick straw poll. Uh, and Nat, you can use a pool quietly. You cannot play pickleball quietly. So Barry.
Go to Abby because I know she tried earlier, please.
Abby.
No, 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 sorry. I had all these issues with my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, finally. Um, I, I I feel like conflicted about it where I feel like we shouldn't do nothing, but I do think Nat kind of brought up a good point of like, what is the problem we're actually trying to solve? Like, is it the noise? Is it, you know, is it truly people building their personal pickleball courts and making so much noise that like it's unbearable for the neighbors? Because what I have said before is I used to live next door to the public pickleball courts. And yes, you could hear them, but it also like didn't ruin my life. And I li- I lived there for a while. So, I mean, I guess the question is, is this more of like a noise issue? Because I do think though, Dave, you made a good point. You can use a swimming pool quietly. It can't, like pickleball is not, it's either like it's loud when it's being used or it's not being used. So I I just wonder is like the issue more with how we handle noise as opposed to the actual like whether or not we allow the court. And then, you know, Nat's point though is fair is like, though it's like, how far are we going with that? Like, uh, because then is this you're not allowed parties, that kind of thing where, um, I think anyone who was watching some recent zoning um, meetings knows that came up in, but then that really begs the question of like, should we be talking about specific noise issues in certain zones? And that's what we should be focusing on as opposed to whether or not it's pickleball, but more like not allowing certain levels of noise in certain areas. And I I guess that's really more where I'm thinking about it is it's, it's not pickleball per se. It's more having it be so loud that it's extremely, you know, disturbing to your neighbors. But then that's more of like a noise issue. So I guess that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Abby. I mean, it's definitely a noise issue. I don't think there's a question. Uh, Barry. And then I'm gonna go to a straw poll.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Do you want to let Joe go first and then?
No, 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 go to Barry.
No, you're good. Okay, so ju- just, just a few things in in analyzing this a bit further. Uh, Joe, to your point about the HTC, I'm just realizing right now, the moment we started talking about this is the moment the floodgate opened, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's still gonna be time between now and meeting for people to file that quoting. Who knows what's gonna happen?
It takes effect as soon as it's noticed.
Okay.
So right now you cannot pull, you cannot pull a permit for one, correct, Meg?
That's, so Massachusetts law says that as soon as the advertisement is is published, that's when the ballot change takes effect. So, I mean, if you were to take the path of asking the select board not to include this on the warrant, that would obviously nullify that. But, um, in in terms of if you proceed with this, it will continue through the process. It may evolve through the motion. It may evolve at town meeting, but it it's effectively prohibited until town meeting takes action.
Yep. So I would probably argue with this at this point, if it does go on the warrant, be prepared to sit tight because you're probably gonna have this one article easily consume about an hour or two at town meeting. Because it'll, it'll be all over the, I think it will really be all over the place. Just saying.
I I, but with that, with that thought, then then we're doing the right thing, right? If 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 it's gonna bring forward that much debate, then I think.
Right, but what I don't want to, I I I really want to make sure that if we're gonna do this, we do it in a very conscientious fashion. And that that's where I'm, this is where I'm going to, what's the strategy to get? And that that's where I'm, this is where I'm going to, what's the strategy to get this thing moved through? So that it becomes a very, you know, it becomes a a very honest and rational process. As opposed to, you know, depending upon how many people are at that moment. You know, the no crowd gets up and that's the end of the conversation. Okay?
Yep.
So. Is it? Where do I wanna go with this? Real quickly. Megan, is there a way to tie this in to where? Um, if you were to put in a restriction, could you tie it to a noise level? No, no, okay, because.
Is regulated outside of zoning, so that's something entirely separate.
Okay, now I just, I just, because the the, I again, this this is all about the noise thing, and I didn't know if there was a, again, that. If there was a clever workaround for it at this point. My gut reaction says to me right now. That in order to make some sense of this. Do it, if you wanna push this through. Let's do it as a special permit. Make it as restrictive as we possibly can with an understanding of. We need time to be able to work through this a lot. In a lot more genuine fashion. And that would give us the appropriate amount of time, either with a special town meeting or an annual town meeting. To be able to handle that and make changes that would be a little bit more favorable. Conscientiously favorable toward it. That's the only other thing I wanna say.
All right, so with that said, Barry, uh, we're gonna take a straw poll. I just want, um. Sitting members to. Raise their hand. If they would like to table this for a subsequent town meeting. So if you are in favor of of tabling this and taking no action on it. Raise your hand. All right, there we go, so. You're. You're muted, Nat.
Yes, I raised my hands.
But that, just cuz you wanna be the only one.
Yep.
All right.
I don't know if I wanna be the only one, I just feel that this is way too. Oh my God, and almost embarrassing in some ways, even though it isn't. And it's a real issue. It's like hilarious, I guess, at the same time, we're all over the country now on this pickleball thing.
Yeah, it's not just.
What are we doing, like, it's, you know, the, I hate the whole ban tucket thing that I came up with three years ago, but that's what it looks like. And what is, and by the way, what does the Westmore Club do?
Pre-existing, non-conforming, they're.
No, no, hold on. Yeah, but, yeah, but Dave. That is kinda like what we should be looking at, like, they're in a residential neighborhood, it's allowed, but it's all special permit. Do they shut down the courts? And it isn't just pickleball.
What do you mean, do they shut down?
No, do they shut them down at a certain time?
No, I, I I think they should do this.
Seven, I don't know.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Okay, so listen, we, I think that the the vote showed that that. Most of the board wants to move forward with this, so. I I think that, you know, it will become apparent, especially when we get into the the um, public engagement piece. And and you know what, we can say, hey, enough's enough, we're gonna table this, motion, take no action. And and we'll come back and revisit it, but let's take the next step in the process and and see what happens.
It's it, it's very hard to have a public hearing at town meeting, so we have to make sure that we have enough. Conversation to get the.
Well, this will be on.
Amendments, right.
This will be on on the twenty third. And and we'll open it then for a public hearing, and and we've got a a couple of public hearings to figure out what we're gonna do with it, so. Let's, let's do that, and and hey, maybe after the first public hearing, we're gonna change our mind on 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 what action we take, but let's let. Let's just trust the process and see where we get. All right.
Yeah.
All right. There we are. Thank you, guys, I think that's it, right, Meg, we've we've covered all the bases.
Yeah, if we can get a motion and a vote. For that.
Okay.
Would be appreciated, please.
So, I'll make a motion at this point that we. Adopt the, we give a positive recommendation toward sending this to town meeting. Maybe there can be. Let's just leave, let's leave it as simple as that, then, that's my motion, thank you.
Second.
All right, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe Barry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Nat.
I'll go along with you guys now.
I love the way you play well with others, John. And I'm, I, and I'm an I as well.
Am I allowed to sigh with my vid, audio on?
No, not with your, sigh all day long when you're muted.
I had my audio off, so you didn't hear me sigh.
I know we're being recorded, but it sounds like a softcore porn. When your microphone is on, so just.
Listen, it started with a steamship a long time ago, the sigh.
Just, just, just mute, please.
Our, our great Messiah.
Is that background nineteen eighty? When it was frozen across.
I I'll go look at it later and I'll text you.
Because the uncatina looks like it wasn't lengthened in that picture, but it has to be nineteen eighty.
That was before color, nah.
No, Joe.
I didn't say it.
All right.
All right. In a motion to, uh, adjourn.
I will share it.
So move, sir.
The second.
Uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe Barry.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I'm an I as well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great day.